I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everybody like to join me in a place of listen?
I pledge allegiance to and by the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I call Mr. Dawson?
Here, LaPorte.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Short, if they have to be excused. Trustee McCollough.
Here.
Trustee Conner. Deputy Lieutenant Sullivan.
Yeah.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Dawson. I believe everybody has a copy of the last month's minutes. Would there be any corrections or additions? And if not, may I get a motion to have the -- the motion and seconded addees accepted?
Do take those count? In the paragraphs under what I said, I think it may have been like the last paragraph, become was two words that should have been longer. Yeah, last paragraph.
Would there be any other corrections or additions to the minutes? Would the corrections of become would -- could we have a motion to have the minutes accepted as amended?
Make a motion, accept the minutes as amended.
I second.
Motion by Trustee Connor, second by Trustee McCollough. Hall and David?
Aye.
Here, thank you. At this time, would there be anybody here at this time that would like to address the At this time, there's nobody from the general public that would like to address the Board? We'll move on to report of the Mayor. Really don't have much to report on this evening. I would like to jump to correspondence. Nine in our correspondence this evening. Correspondence from the village of Whitesboro. They're requesting information on forming a fire district. They themselves are a village that are going through pretty much the same scenario as the village of Tremblaine had in the past in its endeavor for a fire district. They're seeking information relative to this forming a fire district with town. I was wondering if Mrs. Dawson, if there was any literature that we might be able to help them with. Because I know that we ourselves have a lot of correspondence dealing with the formation of a fire district. And maybe to inquire with our Fire Chief Chris Tremblaine on this and see if he can put up some information as well. And maybe Fire Commissioner. Right, and getting in touch with John Fayum, our Fire Commissioner. See if we could all be on board to try and help this village out. Okay, if you would please. They seem to be working in the same condition our small village was working in. And anything that we can do to help them make a rational decision would be beneficial, I'm sure. At this time, I want to ask any of our Board members if they themselves have had a chance to ask anybody about people for the zoning board.
Acquiring.
I know it's been a -- it's been an ongoing issue. I know that myself, I've been on camera and asked for volunteers. I have two names that might have considered the zoning board. And as at this time, Mrs. Dawson, do we appoint these people to the zoning board?
Yes, she would make it as a matter of.
I would make that as a. Because our correspondence, and like I say, we needed this. So I've gone and I've asked numerous people. And I have had Joseph Patre, Joseph Patre, I said he would be on the zoning board. As well would be Linda LaPorte. This would make us a full zoning board. So at this time, I would appoint both of these individuals to the zoning board of appeals. One other thing. Robert, I would like you probably to bring up the Board to where you are with our earthquake damage. I know that you spoke to the emergency services last Wednesday. I mean, I've talked with you, but I would like you to let the Board know where we are with that.
We're absolutely nowhere.
Okay, that's.
I got a couple of leads on people I might talk to, but there is no public assistance money there for this. However, they've handed out or there is available some mitigation money. It's $415,000 that's available for five counties to spread out. That's really nothing.
I was going to say, that's really not.
Hate to say that, but I mean.
That's really no money at all for five counties. Okay, then, this is why I wanted you to mention this, to bring the Board up to far where we are on our earthquake damage.
We have one other call, one other person I might call. Might be able to lead me out of something though.
Right, right.
They're just, they're very, very slim heads.
Right, because we were talking about a collapsed sewer line and I believe a cracked wall in our digestive system.
You're also talking about a drain, part of the drainage system that's, there's a sewer pipe.
Drainage.
Drainage and the crack in the.
Yeah. And we feel that earthquake that we had didn't help any of those situations at all. Well, I want to thank you very much for the information to bring up the Board up to where we are on it. It doesn't sound good, but who knows? This time, we will probably address some more to correspondence at a later date, at a later time. That would be it for my report. Report of trustees. Trustee Connor.
Just something I just happened to know. So waiting for Bob's report. It was under FYI, the last item on that second page, above the East Street water main.
Yeah.
Have you done any research as far as costs or anything like this?
No.
This would probably be something looking for next year's budget.
Most likely.
And do we have a length of which you're.
No, I haven't, not at this point, no.
And where's that, where's that water main road, which side?
It runs, oh, let's see, that runs on the west side of the road and outside, depends how you look at it.
Between, actually between the pavement and the building?
Yeah, but it's, you know, not on like, say, well, Larry's Trail.
No.
It's the opposite side from that.
So it's on the Harris side or you're on Kempf's?
East Street.
It's on East Street.
Perpendicular, so perpendicular to.
Right, it's East Street.
For some reason, I was thinking Elm Street, okay.
So would be northeast side or?
Northwest.
Northwest.
Northwest side, northwest side.
And that's, so that's really, that doesn't go any more than a couple of feet, does it?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't go very far at all. It would, that's another one, I know that years back, they tried to.
It's a four-inch water main?
Yes, yes, it is. The six-inch spur comes down to the fire hydrant. And at the fire hydrant, it reduce, someplace after that, it reduces. I don't have accurate prints on this. But what we saw is the Oda pipe itself.
Case.
Yeah, the steel, another ductal iron itself.
Right.
Has a scallop look to it. So it's acid eating at the outside of the pipe. And, you know, you can almost predict that this is going to happen.
It's going to matter of time, it's just going to rupture.
Yeah, and that's why I suggest using PVC pipe.
Right.
Because that's impervious to that.
So I think what you're probably asking of Mr. Sullivan is, probably in some time, get a distance and a cost that we can work, try and work on in the next year's budget, is what you're saying.
I'm sure.
Right, and, you know, it's just a, because as we know, we will be starting our budget process again very shortly, about three months or so. We would like to have some idea of what's going on. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Chuck. Would there be anything else?
No, that's okay.
Just, you sure it's not here? Trustee McCollough.
I emailed the National Recreation Park Association to see if I could find out any information about affordable liability insurance for the BMX park. I got a call late last week from Mr. Barry Tyndall from Washington, D.C. I guess he did get the email and it got buried on his desk. He apologized for having it there so long. He said that, and this was a voicemail, by the way, so I wasn't directly talking to him. And he said that he was going to be out on vacation till the 22nd or 23rd, which is tomorrow or.
Right.
Or Wednesday, and he had my number and he would call me at that time. And we could talk about the liability insurance. So I don't know if it's good news or bad news, but I will be contacting him within the next few days and I will write a report, whatever he tells me.
Okay, good.
All right?
Good.
That was one thing. The other thing, I was looking over Bob's wastewater treatment plant work report. It says that we have the grit airlift diaphragm pump was malfunctioning, have developed a plan to make repairs. And then in your FYIs, says the venture into the wastewater treatment plant grit pump was unnecessary at this time and was not able to be scheduled for work.
Well, yeah, it was not, we had, I had laid out a series of things that wanted to be done before that.
Okay, but is it, is it truly malfunctioning?
Yes.
And is there a plan?
There's a plan to do that, and that's something that we didn't really need the warmer weather to do.
Okay.
It's in a, you know, it could be done on a snowy day. Well, that matters.
I just, I just want it to be forgotten and then.
No.
When we come to need it, we're not to have it available to us.
Oh, I'm not going to, no, I won't do that.
All right.
Something that hasn't been operated in about a year or so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
All right, I guess that's all I have.
Okay, and thank you, Trustee McCollough. Trustee Tremblaine.
Uh, no report.
Report by our Clerk, Fager.
On October 1st, we're getting water and sewer billing for the months of July, August, and September. The water billing is in the amount of $42,881.70. And the sewer billing is in the amount of $72,203.35. I've copied these to you with the month end report for revenue expenditures for the end of September. If anyone has any questions for that. I'd also like to make public notice and publish a report for 2003 election. The next election will be held March 18th, 2003. And at the time, we'll have two trustees up to three-year terms and Mayor will be up to two-year terms. We have to close this a minute, but we'll publish it also.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Would there be any questions for Mrs. Dawson? Thank you very much for your report this evening and our elections. We won't even say how happy we are to see the. Report of our Superintendent.
I have my written report. You questioned me on a couple of things. Is there anything else that we had here? When I wrote this, it said that Roderick was quite willing, they have done some of the, they pumped some of the water stations, had a problem getting into the, into the water plant itself. This weekend, this Friday, I'm going to meet with a guy who I'm changing the electric switches, switching arrangements. So we put the light pumps as our primaries, the lower.
The lower switches we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, just change them in the switch box. I'd love to be able to just have switches there that I could make them primary and secondary, you know? But I don't know if we can do that right now.
So what you're going to do is you're going to have the smaller pumps as the primary?
Right.
And the larger, more expensive running pumps as a secondary?
Are going to go as your overflows.
Okay. There was going to be a considerable.
Pardon?
Pardon me, there was going to be a considerable amount of savings as far as.
We believe so.
Well, yeah, even the consumption from the horsepower.
Yeah, yeah. Let alone the, you know, the amount of start, starting effort, it's huge, it's.
Right.
Big time. And then sometime this winter, we'll try to get to work down, down below and get the piping arrange, arrangement changed. As long as we have one set of pumps operating, taking your influence into the plant.
Right.
Then you can turn around and transfer the others around.
So that will probably be done during the winter months?
Yeah.
Okay. Usually.
Out of the weather.
Out of the weather and out of, you probably have supposedly a less volume of flow.
Your dry weather flows are usually, you know, this day, your driest weather flows are in the winter time.
Right, right.
You know what, one more thing, on that BMX park, the, something that I was pondering, wonder if it'd be possible to, to make that like a club or association so it would be disassociated from the, from the village. Wonder if that's a practical thing. We're supposed to go, you know, try that out on Nikon, but it was not, it wasn't practical to do that down at the, at this meeting.
But could they, could they use village property?
Yeah, I don't know, that's, that's, see, that's all Nikon stuff that you got to find out, whether you can do that or not.
That would be my concern too.
Yeah.
Right.
Club is one thing, but you know, use village property, sell this village property and you'd be liable for.
Well, I mean, that.
That's skilled property of the village.
But if you get in touch with that guy, that might be another thing to ask, and I'll try to do the other, the Nikon thing for my end.
Yeah, because we really, we as a Board, totally individuals, young individuals, that, you know, we would work our best to come to some suitable agreement if we could. If anybody's watching this, they'll know that we are still in pursuit of.
We haven't lost sight.
I've lost sight of it, so I, you know. As I interjected at first meeting, the costs will govern what happens. And that's it. So is that it, Robert?
Yeah, I think that's it.
Well, any other questions for Mr. Sullivan, Superintendent Sullivan? Well, let's not, let's move on to correspondence. Some issues we're hearing might want, I guess.
I am not a correspondent inside in St. John's because the church is already designed. We've also had a copy that has been sent to the zoning board.
Right. They're going to have to. The zoning board will be the one that will make the decision on.
Well, one of these, they wanted to put possibly in the par, on the edge of the par. So it would also require you, this board to give its blessing as well.
Okay.
That would be on the corner of, it doesn't say it here, but that's what he said he was going to do.
It's not on here.
I know, he said he was going to put one on the corner of Elm.
It says intersections of Oak and Elm, and Oak and Chestnut.
But he mentioned to me in, in the conversation, it was in Elm and Main.
So that would be, so that would be around our par proper?
Yeah. But it doesn't say it here.
That's kind of cluttering the park, I mean, if it was.
Well, it wouldn't be in the par, it'd be on the edge of the.
Right.
Edge of the sidewalk.
Right.
On the Elm Street.
And I read his letter and it stated that they are out of the way. So it does make it kind of hard for, for anybody to do, find their house of worship, you know, and I understand that. Okay, then, thank you.
Item two is correspondence to ISO regarding the building's code enforcement department.
I had a phone call today when I wasn't here to get and returned it, but he wasn't there, but played a telephone tag about this question.
That's not set up on file now.
So he hasn't set up an appointment?
No.
Because I know he wants to come back to the village, I believe, should correspond to, right?
Item three is correspondence from Attorney, from the Attorney General's office regarding Operation Clean Sweetland. Item four is correspondence from Flatford State regarding the technical assistance center. Item five is correspondence from the State Department regarding reimbursement for training costs for the code enforcement schooling.
I spoke to Mr. Sullivan about this and he said he went March this year and it went from April 1, or, yeah, April 1 to March 31st.
Item three, so. I asked him, is, do you have a state, how do you reimburse ahead of time, you know? It just seems to be the wrong, wrong dates here.
Right.
We're looking for reimbursement money.
Well, did we get reimbursed for the other period?
I think we did one period, didn't we, Mrs. Dawson, that we applied for?
I thought this was one of the first time.
This would be the second.
Well, it'd be the second time?
Yes.
Well, I probably misread it and I thought.
Don't laugh, get reimbursed for it.
It was over, it was two years ago. You'd be happy to reimburse something like that.
But that's what I was.
Don't laugh.
Yeah, but I haven't, the months haven't passed yet, but yeah.
But he's going to, he's going to be on it, because I spoke to him about it today. But yeah, fine.
Item six is correspondence from the State Department of Labor regarding assistance with OSHA PES or required compliance, offhand assistance. Item seven is a notice that we've had in the paper regarding the pickup days, which start Tuesday, October 22nd and Tuesday, October 29th. Item eight is correspondence from AEC Northeast regarding several new services they have to offer. Item nine is correspondence from the village of Whitesboro regarding the fire district information, which we had already addressed. Item 10 is correspondence to Ty Jarvis regarding a return of duty regarding the bill of taxes on the property downtown. Item 11 is correspondence in the Northern Tier Chamber of Problems regarding upcoming demands. And that's all I have for correspondence.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Dawson. Up on our, next on our agenda is old business. The first thing on our old business is our town water and sewer contracts. From what I can see, Superintendent Sullivan, I think what they did was they grouped them Has anybody had a chance to look at them and if there would be any discussion on them? We'd had a discussion earlier, yes, Mrs. Dawson?
I only noticed two rate changes on the sewer one, but the other one seemed okay. On page three, under rate figure should be 1120, not 1130, a gallon, a thousand gallons. And then under, it's again page three, but it's under, it's a bit of a schedule. B, on page three, they're showing, so we've got $10 per thousand and that's going to be still 1130. Those are the only two changes that I picked up from the last one.
What was the second one?
Under identity, exhibit B.
Yeah.
For page three.
calculation of billing.
Okay, it's $10, this should be.
I wish we could make those corrections and Ned Albert initial them when we sign it. Should be ready to go.
So that would, on exhibit B, page three, from 10 to 1130, per thousand? That would be the correction that would be needed to make this.
It's been a motion for the Board to put you deciding of this contract.
Right. So if I was to cross initial date and enter that at 1130, would the board give me the approval to sign the water sewer contracts with the town?
And there was an also the other one on page three, the 1130, 1120, you said was?
Actual, actual page three, yeah.
Actual page three.
Under one, under rate?
Yeah.
That should be 1120.
That should be 1120 instead of 1130.
So there's two changes.
Yeah.
So there's two changes. So initiating the two changes, which I will have. Clerk Treger Dawson, make sure that I are correct. Two, do I get the approval from the board to sign these water contracts?
I'll make a motion that we give the mayor permission to sign the water sewer contract with the town champagne with the two adjustments to the contract. In a second.
So motion, one adjustment by trustee Connor, second, trustee McCulley, all in favor?
Right.
Thank you, carried. So as soon as that is done, we will take care of our water sewer contract. Thank you very much, board members. Okay, the second thing on the old business was our zoning board members. And I, as of this evening, have appointed two individuals to the zoning board. Zoning law amendments, number three. Was that, or was that still not?
No, those are ready to go. I sent them down to Mr. Cable, he in turn has sent them to CJ Madonna. And I received a fax today that CJ will accept with the logs in proper form, we'll get back to it. I just got that today, you weren't copying it all.
Okay, then, so.
We should have something for our next meeting.
We should have something for our next meeting.
It's just a matter of putting it in its legal form, it doesn't need an extra publication.
Okay, then. Right. So this will be tabled till our November meeting? Okay, then. And again, on the old business, number four was to Mr. Philion Culbert. Trustee Short is not here this evening. Has anybody? Or has anybody heard anything on this? I know I, myself, I haven't. Nobody has heard anything on it, I believe.
It's passed on the streets, right?
Right, and that trustee Short was supposed to, to talk with this individual, as he was.
I haven't talked to Tony, but I'm up on that street quite often and that doesn't look anything different than it did two years ago when Scott and I went and looked at it. I don't know if he is that, just, just fully on it.
Right.
I haven't, but nothing looks any different than it did then.
Right, okay. That's where we were, that's why we asked if trustee Short would, would check with this individual. We will have to bring this up again in November. It does not go anywhere. So we're gonna have zoning amendments and old business, and it's culprised on old business for next month. Would there be any other old business to be brought before the board this evening?
Uh, one thing, I noticed the leaves are falling as quickly as, as what we, we would like. No, I, we, we talked about this prior year.
Every year.
And we've added an extra day of pickup because of it. We may wanna consider into November, an extra day of pickup for leaves.
I was talking to the probation people and they usually do, the, a couple of streets that really have deep ditches, Oak Street's one of them, they have both deep ditches and lots of leaves, Oak Street's one of them, in that area. He's not coming till November. And I don't know, I think I would pick a date someplace in the middle of November.
Have another one?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause it, it looks to me like this, you know?
Yeah, because they say like.
Lots of little stuff.
Like the second or third Tuesday of November, what's, how's that fall?
Well, we're looking at, okay, the second Tuesday in November is the 12th. And that would actually be, 'cause it wouldn't be, I thought we'd skip a week, that would be two more weeks after our last.
Right.
Pickup, at, at that time, do you think that maybe we might set up November 12th as the tentative third pickup?
It's probably.
As good as any.
Yeah, I mean, by then, you're, you're, you're looking at really cold weather and.
Yeah. Still a crap shoot.
You have a chance of snow and all that stuff. It's not gonna snow before then anyway.
Right. So I think probably we're gonna put November 12th as another tentative collection date. And, yeah, 'cause this is just. That way it would give them another, another week to, another time for, for leave falling. I don't think we need a motion on that.
To set it be published under specific.
All right. All we can do is make it for another pickup date for the 12th. Thank you, trustee Hunter, would there be any other old business? Would there be any new business to come before the board this evening? Still haven't got to that funny business yet. Okay, we got the presentation of warrants, we need to pay our bills this month. Do we have any additions?
I have been presented with four, five additions here. Commonwealth Electrical Inspection Services, run electrical inspection, an amount of $75.
Okay.
And another one for Greg Seagull Electrical and Plumbing, and that was installation of automatic 400 amp transfer switch, a 400 amp main switch, installed wiring to existing panels and to new generators, an amount of $1,310.85. Manion Electric Loaner Service, an amount of some repair to a bomb.
That's the water pump, that's an emergency repair, I should call that.
Why, that was from our water.
From our water pumps.
From our water.
And while, while we're on the subject of that, I'm glad, yeah, I put it on. I would like to send the other one, the other motor, they're both of the same vintage, they're 13 years old. The bearings went in this one. My thought is, let's get the bearings done before we have a go to pieces and. It, it's rather rapid once it starts to happen.
Right. 'Cause you and I spoke about that and that's why, and they went to, they went to Mannion's?
Yeah.
Right, 'cause you and I had that conversation? So I think what Superintendent Sullivan's saying this evening, the water pumps that are down there, they're 13 years old and we ended up putting bearings in one of them because of, and I'm sure it was drawn more iron branch and it was starting to chatter and make a lot of noise. I would almost think that it would be just like changing the spark plugs in your car, because you got one bad, you'd almost wanna change the whole set. My recommendation to the board would probably be to have the other one sent down and checked and have new bearings for that before it does any more damage, before the damage does occur. If we get the, if anybody have any, if we get the approval of the board to do that?
Yeah, yeah, no problem with that.
No problem with that? Okay.
What was the cost of that, the?
Four.
$3.7150.
$3.7150?
Yeah.
Okay. And those are, do you tell me, 25 horse?
25.
25 horse, three size electric motor. Okay.
Now, to wait, to wait until it goes bad, goes sour, we're talking some serious dollars.
Oh, yes, we are.
Yes.
Yeah, we understand. Okay, then, Mrs. Dawson.
I have two more, a truck rental. I have bill tip for two, one isn't even. I have, don't have one, that's so you can't pay them.
Right, right.
The rental of a two-ton roller, an amount of $399.30. And the rental of a tractor with a loader and brush hog and rotary cutters, an amount of $269.23. For a total of $668.53.
$660. $23.
And the last bill is to Bob's Instant Plumbing, to clean out a sewer line that was in the name. This house was not the problem. This one's built to a resident on Pine Street, an amount of $137.50. And then we have another one to the village, for $73.50, to clean out the line.
He, it's a small, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
'Cause it's, it'll explain what happened. There's, we've had problems on this line before, but we renewed the whole thing. It's a, I believe it's a four inch that goes from the middle of Pine Street to Church Street. We had a problem there a number of years ago and for some reason, something went down. It's, it's with two houses joined, so. The, the first resident was having problems backing up and he did something about it. And he says, it's, it's not mine, I get out to the street and it's not mine. We, we do have a clean out out in the street. He was right there at the time, he said, putting it, you know, go for it right there. So that's why we did it that way. It's a small line, I don't think my, my sewer jet's really too big to get down that line. It caused me some problems, I'm gonna dig the street up here. Anyway.
Okay.
Resolve the problem.
So you're asking for an additional $26.3688 to be added to the warrant this evening? That was a quick figure. Do we get a motion to pay the bills with the added vouchers this evening? So, do I get a second to that?
Second.
Second. So to pay the warrant, a trustee, motion trustee Connor, second, trustee Tom Lee, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Would there be any more business to come before this board this evening? And if not, could I get a motion for an adjournment? Motion trustee Connor?
Second.
Second, trustee McCulley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.